Hello, good evening. Welcome to the meeting of Council and Committee of the Whole for January 3rd. Happy New Year, everyone. One more thing. And we'll get started with any declarations of the community's interest. Seeing none.
Le proposée par Conseil Saint-Louis, secondée par Conseil Cauchoine, est résolue que l'agenda pour la réunion du Conseil, déroulée le 3 janvier 2023, soit approuvé comme présenté.
Your favorite? Karen, who has the... Okay. We're going to go straight into Committee of the Whole. We've got quite a few items under 3.1 for General Government this evening. The first item A is a demonstration of the municipal website and CGIS program. And for that, we're going to hand it over to Ms. Markou and Jeanne. Technical difficulties?
We're just trying to share the screen. All right, there we go. Hey, Wels, thank you for having us tonight. We are happy to be here and excited to talk about the best department, in my opinion. But no, in all seriousness, we are going to provide an overview of who we are and what we do, and talk a little bit about the services that we provide to the corporation within a showcase of our website and some of the features that we have available to everyone. About the team. So, well, Communications is a service that's provided under the Corporate Services Department. So we are two communication officers, Cassandra Lane and myself. We oversee all of the external communications and we facilitate much of the internal communications. So essentially, we provide professional communication services and advise the corporation on communication and marketing strategies. This is just kind of a list of some of the services or communication services that we provide to the corporation. Strategic Communications and Planning, we view development of corporate communication materials, Creative Direction and Graphic Designing, Social Media Management. We also oversee corporate identity and brand management, so the logos, the corporate marks, social media and website content management, media relations. We do a little bit of policy research and development within our field, and we help out with the event promotion. Basically, all of that to say that our key role within the organization is essentially to ensure that important and relevant information is shared clearly, excessively, and concisely through a different medium, communication tools, whether that be traditional or digital media, while working with all the departments to develop their communication plans and ensuring that they align well with the corporate communication plan. We manage the content on the municipal website and social media channels. That includes responding to inquiries and helping to guide residents to find the information and to find the proper information or resource if we can't provide them with the information. And lastly, we are the first point of contact for all media inquiries. So whether a media representative is requesting an interview, we help kind of facilitate that between the employee and the media representative and/or sometimes council or mayor. All right, the fun stuff. So, social media. Obviously, it's no surprise that social media has become one of the most popular tools for communicating digitally. We use kind of a variety of different platforms, some a little bit more than others. We are present and active on some more than others for reason and due to the amount of audience or the different types of audiences that we have on those platforms. So Facebook, our following continues to grow by an average of 12% per year. It's our main social media tool for all of our communications. So you're going to see everything from traffic notices to service interruptions to posts about our employees and initiatives that we're doing. We post a lot of events on there. Pretty much anything that we are trying to inform the public about will be on our Facebook. Twitter, we generally use it more for news and notices, and that's how we interact a little bit more with stakeholders and media groups. Instagram is kind of new for us. We just recently, over the past year, year and a half, created a channel, started slowly adding some content here and there, some photos. But over the past two or three months, we've been a lot more active on Instagram. So you should follow us on there. We create some fun little reels and some posts. Twinkle, our mascot, has been taking it over a little bit, but we're getting some control back of it, so. We use it generally for tourism aspects and a lot of event promotion. It's a little bit of a younger audience on there as well, so we're trying to make sure that we can communicate with all the different age groups. YouTube, well, you're probably watching this on YouTube right now. So we use it generally to stream and record council and committee meetings and also livestream certain events that we have, such as the OPP grand opening that we had and arena renaming, different things like that that we think the public might want to watch. And LinkedIn, obviously, we use it for employment opportunities and networking and things like that with different community partners. All right, I will hand it off to my colleague.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim. Okay, so a little bit about the municipal website. We redesigned and relaunched the website about two years ago. It was in 2020. And we worked with a team called Crimson Pepper. They're a local agency. Howie Longfellow, you might know him, and his colleague Sean Lawrence. He's a developer. Howie's the director and designer. So we worked with them to build this new site that was more accessible, mobile-friendly. And of course, we got the help of Kevin Yarush, our IT person, just to make sure that everything was nice and cyber-safe. Now, the latest version that was launched in 2020 was a big step for us because it was mobile-friendly. It's responsive to any type of device. But we also wanted it to be accessible in more ways than just the device. So it's important that everybody have access to the information, whether they are tech savvy or not, whether they have disabilities or not. We want this information to be accessible to everyone. So that's basically one of our commitments. It's an extension of the customer service experience. Excuse me. So oftentimes, we'll have clients or residents or customers, whatever you want to call them. So citizens get ahold of us. They can get ahold of us by email. They can get ahold of us by walking in or by calling to 250. Well, we want the website to just be an extension of that. So if they call to 250, they end up talking to a certain department. The department can easily say, oh, this information is on the website. You can find the form there. You don't even have to come in and get the printed copy, that type of stuff. So it's sort of like working together with all of the departments that are already providing service. We also want the website, like one of the main goals, is that it becomes a trusted hub for municipal information. Because a lot of people have a way of sharing information within the town, right? So you can go on social media, find out about news, what's happening. You can hear about events or things that are happening through word of mouth. But we do want people to know that, like, if you're looking for a specific piece of information and you want the right information, this is where it's going to live. So every once in a while, on Facebook, we'll see people interacting and somebody will be asking a question, and some people are attempting to answer. And every once in a while, we'll see somebody who says, oh, here's the link, all the information's on this page. And we like to see that because it takes them to our website and then they can find out everything. And it empowers that person to become educated on the topic and just to know the information that they're looking for. And then to share it if they want to. And then another consideration about the website is that it's constantly evolving. Our community changes, our needs change, the technology changes. So we do our best to evolve with that. So as Kim mentioned, we don't just make decisions arbitrarily on social media or web. We heavily base it on analytics. So we look at the data and we look at how people use the website, and that helps us make decisions on how we will serve them online. So Google Analytics shows us how online users navigate municipal websites. It allows us to understand the needs of the online public and allows us to serve them better. On average, we have about 200 users per week. And by users, it could be staff, it could be residents, it could be people from outside of the organization or the town, but anybody navigating to our website. And that number has more than doubled since we launched an accessible responsive website. So in 2009, or 2019, sorry about that, 2019, we had about 900 users per week. But now that people can access it on their phone or on the go and they actually can read the information on their phone or on their tablet, there's a little bit more usage. So our most visited pages for 2022 were the elections page, the council meetings, waste and recycling, more specifically landfills, employment page, pool and fitness, basically like all of recreation, and billing and planning. So a lot of these are, they don't change too much from year to year. We've been tracking it since 2018. And a lot of the time, these come up as like the top hits, except for elections, that was kind of like a special one, obviously. You guys are popular. How users navigate to the website. So the analytics help us understand how they get to their information. So organic search means that you would just go into Google and say landfill, West Nip Sing, or hours of my dump in burner, you know? So then you would, that's an organic search that would land you to the page that you're looking for. Social is if we put something on Facebook and we say, hey, here are the hours for the holidays for the municipal dub. Then you click from Facebook, it takes you to the website. And then we have the direct. So if you have a bookmark saved, or if I send you an email and say, here's the exact page. And then referral, which is similar to direct. And then the devices used to navigate the municipal website. 61% of users access their information on mobile device, 32% on desktop computer, and then 7% on tablet. And if you would have asked me four or five years ago, what are people using to access our website? I would have probably said a little bit more, like a little bit more desktop. The mobile number is really climbing and climbing and climbing. So in rebuilding the website, when we did, we made sure that it was as user-friendly on a desktop as it is on a phone. And now, enough about those details. We can just go and have a look at the actual website. Give you guys a little demo. So although some of you may be very... Oh? Okay.
Just stop, just stop, share.
Okay.
Kick that screen specifically.
Okay. So although some of you might be very tech savvy and web savvy, I'm just going to deconstruct the landing page just for the sake of inclusion and make sure that everybody knows all the features. Okay, so if we start at the very top, we've got the organization logo, West Nip Sing West. That also serves as a home button. So it doesn't matter where you end up on the website. You select a page, you get your information, and then you say, oh, I saw something about an employment opportunity that is of interest. Excuse me, of interest. So you would click on the company logo and it would take you back to the landing page. Now, I'm just going to click the image. And then, once I click the image, it stops scrolling. So if I want to scroll, I can go manually using the, either the arrows or the little tabs at the bottom. Now, if we look at the top navigation, basically this speaks to who you are. So I would get onto the website and say, oh yes, I am a resident and I'm looking for rinks and arenas. This is where I would find it. Or I'm looking for library, information on libraries or voting beaches. So you can navigate using the top navigation. At any point when you land on a page of our website, you can toggle to the French side. And you can also use the handy-dandy search engine if you're not 100% sure how to get to the page that you're looking for. Now... So, okay, so this here, the large image with the call-out button, that's information that is relevant to that specific week or that specific month. So we change that information pretty often. We just want the most relevant information to be available once somebody gets to the website. And then if a person were to scroll down, you've got a set of three cards. And these are basically some of the, some of the services that somebody might want to get at very quickly. So you don't want somebody searching in the top navigation, like, how do I put in a service request? Like, no, you just want to get to the site, submit a service request. So this is where you would do it. You can either sign up or look at your information for recycle coach, service request, or watch a council meeting. These are things that people would want to access quickly. And these cards don't change too, too often. We'll change them seasonally based on need, but mostly, they've been kind of our go-to. And then we have another set of quick links. So as you had seen in the analytics, some of our top pages, people navigate to very frequently. So we wanted to make it easier for them to get to these pages. So let's take e-services, for instance. If I want to use the top navigation to get to e-services, I can go into the dropdown menu and find it here. But also, if I don't feel like digging through, like, this is a large website, right? So it takes, sometimes it takes a little bit to find what you're looking for. So if you don't feel like doing that, you have access to e-services just down here. But also, if you were to the type of person that just basically gets on any site and just searches for what they're looking for and say, I want to look up my water bill on here. So I do a search for water bill. And it takes me to the water, I can click on the water and sewer page. And from there, I can click on your bills online. So those are three different ways that a person could get to the exact same page. And that's also one of the standards or guidelines that is considered more accessible for people, to give them options. I'm almost done with the landing page. Then we can move on to different services on here. So news and notices will always have the most recent four articles. So this is news that people would see on Facebook. As Kim said, like, we will basically take the information and share everything on our social media, not only Facebook. But if someone were to navigate our website, they can still get the most pertinent information and they can still navigate. From a landing page here, you can find little snippets on each one of the stories. You can navigate using the tabs at the bottoms or the arrows. Or you can go to the news and notices page, where you'll find all of the articles. And you actually have to click on an article to see all of the details. But here, it kind of gives you a breakdown of what was a notice, what was an article. And you can filter at the top if you only wanted to see, like, through notices or news. And let's say you click on one of the articles. You then have access to your information. And you can easily share it on social media or by email with these buttons at the top. And then, of course, at the very bottom of the landing page, and this is actually a constant across the entire site, is our contact information. So if at any point, somebody becomes flustered, they can't find the information, or they really need to reach us about some of the information that they've found, the phone number is there, our contact information is there on every page of the website. And lastly, I think I'm going to show you one of the cool features on our website. So if I go under Culture and Recreation and I click on the Events Calendar. So if we do have a lot of events, we'll usually show them on the, on the image slider. And we'll have a quick link there. But if someone were to use the navigation, you can use it from there. So we have this module that allows us to put a bunch of events in. But we don't have ones right now. But if I look at December, for instance, there were a lot of events. So if I were to click on one event, it gives me all of the details, date, time, whether there's a fee or not. Most of our events are free. But down here, you also have this button to add to your calendar. So if you are interested in a certain, like, for instance, this is a festive skate. If you're interested in this event and you want to go, you can just add it to your calendar. So if you're on your phone quickly, you don't have to say, oh yeah, I need to remember that, or write it on the fridge, or anything like that. You just click the button, add it to your calendar on your phone or your computer. And yeah, it's as easy as that. And I will pass it over to Kim to look at some of the other areas of the website.
Okay, so we will just do a quick overview of some of the features on our website, based off of analytics, but also just based off of really fun and cool features that we have that a lot of people might not know about. So the first thing we're going to go through is one of these quick cards or quick links, recycle coach. Just a quick show of hands, has anybody using recycle coach or has the app? Okay. See, this is why we need to talk about it. So we do actually have quite a few users that are using the app right now. We haven't done too, too, too much promotion. We've done a little bit more soft launches or a campaign online, basically digital. And with that, we have 2,000 users as of today using the tool, which is a lot to be said because when you think about it, you'll see that although there is some function to it, to the tool, that is practical for landfill users, it's mainly a tool that's used for curbside recycling and not all of West Nip Sing has curbside. So we have a lot of users or new users this year. Mainly, most of them are using the online tool, which is this right here on our website, and have also either downloaded the app or, and/or signed up for notifications. So that was a fun way to get direct communication with this tool is the fact that we've been starting to send out notification for those who have subscribed for reminders and/or service interruptions. So let's say there's a really big snow day and our crew's a little bit behind. We have done this in the past where we're actually able to send out through a specific route. Let's say Tuesday, I don't know what route it is, but a specific Tuesday route on this specific section of zone, we're able to send them a notification on their phone or by email, depending on what they've subscribed to, to let them know that, oops, we're a little bit behind, but we'll be there today. Or maybe we won't. We'll send them something saying they have to put their garbage the next day. Doesn't happen very often, but at least we have a tool that we can actually communicate directly with our residents that way. So if you want to get updates, getting the app and signing up for notification is one of the best ways. But aside from the application itself, you can just go on our website and use it directly from there. So recycle coach has a few tools within this module that we have, or tool. You can look up your address. Put up your address here. This is for curbside specifically. But if you were to put another address that does not have curbside, it would simply let you know that the service is, the curbside isn't available, but there would be a drop-off location. So your landfill address would pop up and you could do some searches, and I'll show you a little bit later on. But essentially, you put in your address, confirm it, and this is your schedule. So within the actual calendar itself, you can actually scroll to the icons, garbage or recycling icons, and it'll provide you with the collection requirements as well as the set out descriptions. Anything and everything you need to know about curbside is on this tool. If you've missed a collection, you can also use this on your phone, but if you've missed a collection, once it loads. We just have a few, okay. Sorry about that. Let's go back to it. I think it's because we have a lot of, few things open. But essentially, when you click the missed collection, it usually provides you with a list of reasons as to why your collection may have been missed. You might have not set out your garbage or recycling. Oh, it is. Oh, sorry about that. I can't see it on my screen. But yeah, essentially, it provides you with reasons as to why your collection may not have been... Okey-dokey. Sorry about that. We seem to have technical difficulties. The computer was telling me I was talking too much. Timed out.
Booted me out of here.
Got a word limit.
While we're waiting, if anybody wants to download the app, that'd be great.
Yeah, our Wi-Fi connection just kicked off.
You're back? We can use the rest, maybe?
Yep.
All right, we'll just do a little swap. Ew, all right. Okay.
You have to go back and do the share screen again.
Yeah, let's try this one again. Okay, so we'll just go back to the calendar view, just so I can quickly show you. Okay. So other than the recycling or the garbage information that is available, and the same with the recycling, it's the Blue Box program. It describes what are acceptable and unacceptable materials. If you want to actually download your calendar and/or print it, you can do it from here as well. So you can download the PDF. It allows you to download one, two, or up to six months. You can even subscribe so that recycle coach sends you an updated calendar every six months. So most of the time, it is fairly, like, the calendar is stagnant, it's the same. Obviously, if there are any holidays or long weekends, sometimes we'll have a little bit of a collection change. But it's pretty handy to get your calendars that way for people who prefer to print them out and have them on their fridge. You can do the same as well to export into your calendar. So you get reminders weekly, letting you know the day before and/or the day of, depending on what you set it as, that it's time to put your recycling out. Another handy tool that recycling, recycle coach has that landfill users can also use, and my favorite one, is the What Goes Where tool. Whether it's on your phone or your tablet, or whether you're using it on this desktop, you simply navigate to the What Goes Where and you type in... Bleach, let's just put bleach. Products with warning, warning labels or plastic bottles, jars, and jugs. So we could go to a specific section and it'll provide us, this is recycling. So it'll provide you kind of a breakdown of what it is, whether it's a hazardous material or not, and then the collection requirements. Same thing. And if you end up searching a hazardous waste item specifically, it'll give you the drop off location information as well. So I've used this quite a bit and I know based off of the analytics from Recycle Coach that a lot of the same items come up. So we actually use this information to then tailor our communication around environmental services. So for example, one of the top searches was coffee cups. To-go cups, a lot of people think that they're recyclable, but if you use Recycle Coach, you'll see that because there's a wax coating, most of the time it is not recyclable and should be placed with your waste. So just a few things that we we use to strategize to try to grab that information that we get from users and residents to then tailor our information to make sure that they're well informed about their decisions. So I'll just use this handy tool, go right back and obviously, we we know how to go to this card to go to YouTube, but we will go to the service request form. So as Cass mentioned, we put the service request card or form right on the landing page because we know that people tend to not want to look everywhere for, well, to be able to provide feedback or to request a service. But this is just one of the ways that you can request a service, whether you're giving us a call at 2250, sending us an email to support at, or using this online form. This form is just a little bit simpler if you're already on your computer or you're on your phone. Simply because we have the form fields. So whatever information we need from you, we've put it on this form. So we don't have to do back and forth kind of communications. The cool thing about this form as well is other than just inputting your information, you can select a category. So these are categories that are the most prominent or most popular among service requests. But obviously, if none of these apply, there's always another option as well. So it provides you an opportunity to include the location or the address of concern because sometimes it's not necessarily your address. It might just be a location or somebody else's address. You can then input your description of the concern itself or the service required. And you can even upload an image or a file. So a lot of the times we might get a service request about, I don't know, a specific pothole or something like that. Or there might be a municipal facility or equipment that was damaged. A lot of people will attach an image so that we can physically see what the damage is, what the situation is. So that's pretty handy in itself. And then they simply click the submit button and this gets sent directly to our service team. And we'll get into the nitty gritty of the service request. That'll be at least this section afterwards, but it is very easily accessible. This is what we tend to share with our residents when we're on, we're connecting with them on social media or getting any type of questions as to who they who they should contact, things like that. We will provide the direct link to the service form because it already has all the form fields there. And just another quick feature that we have on our website that I know a lot of people search for are bylaws. So not all of our bylaws are on the website because we have a lot of bylaws. Some that might be, I don't know, outdated, some that are just very lengthy. And so we actually broke it down into the most frequently requested bylaws for residents and services. So there, most of them that you're likely looking for are on here. And we've actually broken them down. So if you click on a specific bylaw, it essentially gives you just a small little summary of what it is because we know with bylaws, it can be very, sometimes a lot of legal jargon. And the actual title of the bylaw might not be as clear to you as it is to a municipal clerk. If you can't find it, you can also search with the key bylaw search word. Search for keyword, sorry. And or you can request a bylaw. So this is just another online forum that we have that allows you to put in the information that you're seeking. The details of your request and then submit, and this will get sent directly to our municipal clerks. So we have a multitude of these online forums that some people might be using, some might not know about. Another one that I would just like to quickly show because because it is very handy as well is our on our building and planning page. Okay, so essentially on this page, not only do we have a lot of information and FAQs to kind of guide residents, especially with building and planning matters, it can be very complex and there's a lot of steps to take. So we're trying to work, we work with the building team to make things a little bit simpler for you. So you can apply for a permit. You can also request an inspection right online. Usually when it's quicker. There's a form. There we go. So yeah, and it's an inspection request form and you put in your details. And this will get submitted and sent directly to our building services team. That's about it for our section. Obviously, there's different tools and different modules and different forms that we have on our website. If you haven't taken the opportunity, I encourage you to kind of have a look and see. You'll probably find your find your preference as to how you like to find the information. Like I said, we have tailored it in a way where you can search by keyword, which is what a lot of people tend to do when they're not quite sure where to go in the navigation. Or eventually you'll probably find your groove and you might use the quick links or the CTAs. All right. Well, thank you for your time. Sorry about all the technical difficulties.
Just before we move on to the CGIS portion, are there any questions from our members in regards to the information given to us by Ms. Michelle? And thank you very much, ladies, for the excellent presentation and all the work that you've put in for us. Are there any questions on what we've seen so far?
Questions for you, Mayor? Kiki bought silly form become, I guess, a workflow because it's a chimney at the end. So you'll have to set it to the end. To the service request forms.
We're sitting by now with the department come to the city. On the mission, I just want to inspection request for me on the affair that I'll adjust it to. And we're working with the department, but in the park and since you're coming a module of click sort for battle, the formula come to.
I'll have a question. With the service request area, when those are received, they go directly to like our our front end administrative staff and they then direct those to the appropriate departments or are the does the dropdown last allow for the request to be directed on their own?
So it's centralized to the service team, which then uses CGIS to deploy the information.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll pass it on to Ms. Craddock to start with the CGIS demonstration.
A little slide show here and then we'll show you the actual software. But again, this was just to make sure everyone's kind of on the same, the same page as we roll through things. So we use CGIS because CGIS is the actual CGIS is the actual name of the company that does our GIS system. But it's sort of like, you know, tissue and clinics. Everyone calls things clinics, even though they're actually tissue. We call everything CGIS because it's our company we deal with. So but it really is just a GIS system and you'll hear a lot of people talking about that. And so it is just a database that then links to property, land types, road types, all that within the municipality. There is an external facing portion and an internal facing portion. Both are constantly works in progress as we find more things to add, different layers to add and things like that. But that's just when we, when we say CGIS, we mean a GIS system. CGIS just happens to be the company that that we deal with. They do deal with a number of municipal clients, particularly in the northeast here. And so they, we they do a lot of information sharing. So if we've requested some special type of layer because it helps our residents, then they then have that layer that then is able to deploy to other municipalities. We've, you know, taken advantage of the same. We got some really cool layers that helped us out during flooding. And that came in because Timmins has a ton of flooding issues. And so then just they added these layers of the technology as you as you go through things. So who uses it within within the organization? So support team, we talked about. So our support team, before I get too far, when we say support team, we're talking about our customer service folks. Now, you guys can't see because we've got construction going on and you can't see our front end people here. But usually you come in the front door, you see a bunch of people sitting in these these front seats and they all are kind of our our customer service folks. Some of them also do tax, some also do building and planning, but they all have got a customer service portion on on things. Najat Gulard and myself sort of supervise the the support team. So sometimes when people are calling and they need to talk to a manager, they're going to get Najat or myself as sort of their their first line of of management for the the support team. Planning and zoning uses it because it is more than just customer services, more than just service requests. And does, we've got a lot of our zoning stuff. I'll show you some of that. It also holds our whole building permit system, which I'm not going to show you tonight, but it links with everything else that our building permits are part of the whole system. Water and sewer, again, from service requests, we'll show you some of the cool things because we're starting to map all of our little bits of things. So we've got curb stops and fire hydrants and all that sort of stuff that are mapped, which assists with our asset management as we roll through things. And we've got that data in there. Public Works, a big user again for service requests. And as we start to map some of these other bits in, obviously, we've got roads. You know, we're got a project to get all our streetlights. We want to get cross culverts in, all these things that are just going to make management of our assets easier as well as serving the public. Waste and recycling. You know, as as our communications folks said that, you know, waste and recycling is one of the the big hits for our our website. It is one of the the things we we use here. As far as actually number of service requests, a lot of it doesn't get into service requests because a lot of times we're providing an answer right away. But it is a really big part, again, as as far as mapping and mapping where where calls come from and things like that. Not on this list, though, are the internal resources. So Recreation actually uses it as well. A lot of the community services and recreation is actually from our tenants and we manage our tenant complaints in our properties on on that. But we do also manage our outdoor spaces and things like that, green space and stuff through here with service requests. So outside of the organization, and I'll show you the the front facing portion. There is a portion that that the outside world can can see. And I'll see if we can get it to open up in the same screen here. No. Do that well. I showed you the the building and landing page before. They talked about the building permits and things like that, but you can actually go to the zoning map here. And so this is, this is again, public, public facing. And so again, one of the the biggest questions we have when people are looking to purchase property, when we had this whole COVID craze of people were buying all kinds of property, but even just in in normal times, people want to know, how is my property zoned and what can I do with it? And so this is a really quick link, whether it's someone who's looking to buy, real estate agents, developers, they can find out how things are zoned. They can flip back to our zoning bylaw. It gives you a really quick overview of acceptable uses and we can roll from there. This is a layer, like I said, that's a a work in progress. We have just this, these few little bits here. And you can turn off if if someone wants to see just commercial land, they can turn off the other ones and then just it'll just highlight just the commercial land for them. But this tool, as it is, is a work in progress tool in that you know, we can add and we've been in discussions with CGIS about adding layers so that we've got our cultural stuff on it. So we may perhaps we have all of our arenas or we've got our playgrounds marked or we've got our cemeteries marked so that they're actually there where people can go and it's easy to to find our trails, things like that. So we can put these layers on them. So again, it's an easy source for public to find things when they're when they're looking to, you know, to do to investigate municipality. Flip you back here quickly to the patient for a quick second. So and this is where, you know, when we're getting service requests, however the service requests come into us, whether it's a phone call or you know, the through the form or whatever, it gets logged on the location where the problem is. So not the location of the person that called us, but the location of where the problem is. And so this gives us that, you know, that geographical location, which is the the big part, obviously, of the of the GIS system. And so that then allows us to start to look at areas that are more problematic. If we want to look at areas where we've got a lot of, our public works teams use it when they're looking at, you know, levels of service and projects for future years. It helps us pin down if we've got an area where we've got a lot of water main breaks. And so it gives us that information because it is is linked to that geography. It's available to to everyone. And again, most times, you know, public work stays within public works and things like that. Sometimes the stuff crosses over between departments. And it's really good for those of us sort of at the top end of the department to be able to go in. Because when the calls get to our desk, then we're able to go in and take a look at what has gone on, who's been there, what other complaints are going on. And it's sort of easy access without having to sort of chase down individual managers all the time. We've got the first data right at our fingertips when we come in. Again, it helps with our internal communications. Go through. It is a good archive. And again, you know, when we're looking at service requests, if we've got historical issues in an area, it gives us a really good idea of where historical problems are. So we know where to focus our rehabilitation or maintenance programs. It also talks about with, you know, particularly with with bylaw, if this is a property that's been a repeat concern, you know, we were out there in 2019 with a property standard issue, they cleaned it up, we've been back out there in 2021, and we get to see that kind of history on it so that we know what's going on on a property. And again, talking about improvement and where we where we focus our services. So just a quick look at what went on in 2022. So nearly 2,000 entries were were logged and I just hit sort of the the biggest four departments. And so Sturgeon Falls Public Works is the largest you know, component of our our service requests. Burner sort of comes comes next. Field is a distant, distant you know, on the on the list there. And so when we look at, you know, how we deploy, where our manpower is, what resources we have. You know, the majority of our service requests actually impact the Sturgeon Falls Public Works Department. You see bylaw is a is a big one there. Distribution and collection is that. So distribution and collection is our pipes in the ground. And so don't panic that it's 236 and that means we've got a ton of problems with the pipes in our ground. A lot of that is people wanting their water turned on, turned off. And so absolutely, it deals with everything that is pipes in the ground, sits under that that category. But we do a lot of water on, water off for people that are snowbirds, for new home builds. If someone's got a problem inside their house, we've got to go turn the water off for them. But it also deals with, you know, leaks and sewer backups and those kinds of things. Water freezing, that type of stuff will fall into distribution and and collection. We separate distribution and collection from water and wastewater treatment. And so if there's a call about an odor in the the water or discoloration or low pressure, it actually goes into, well, low pressure might fit in distribution and collection. And it goes to our our wastewater or water treatment. And the difference is just who deploys on that. So I'll flip you in a second to show you the the CGIS, actually what it what it looks like on the the screen. Distribution and collection is deployed as public works operators. If we've got issues where we actually have issues with, when you said odor or coloration or things like that, it's actually deployed from our operators at our water plant or our wastewater plant. So we'll just flip to show you the the screen and that one. It's gone. Let me close crap down. Close some stuff down. Close some stuff down.
What? Twinkle, maybe. Yeah, don't let that one go, yeah? Twinkle was popular during all this.
Never mind. But we get there. This is the internal one, okay? And so there's a lot, a lot more stuff here than the outside world sees, and I'm letting you into our world a little bit. And it'll be our secret. As I publicly say all these things. So certainly, you can see the the entire municipality in it. And when we compare ourselves to other municipalities, we're a really goofy shape, I have to say. I like these other municipalities who manage to be very rectangular, with everything running in nice little lines, and we've got this, and I don't know what this is. The white gaps in the in the middle are are crown land that isn't in an actual parcel. And we do have these wee little bits off in odd places that are our actual parcels and things, and you can see all our stuff down in our islands and and things like that. I'm just going to show you some of the the cool layers, because like Kim was saying with some of the things, we've got some cool layers here, and it all goes, not all this goes to service requests, but a lot of it goes to just how we function internally to improve services. Most it sits through land information. So we have a variety of things that are available in in land information that are available when we look. Municipal drains is one that we actually use in a lot of outside world. If you're not familiar with municipal drains, by the time you finish your term here, you will be. As far as northeastern municipalities go, we have a lot. It's sort of more common in southern suburb, we have a lot. So I can turn on this, these really squiggly lines here all over the place, and those are our drains. We do take service requests for drains, and we'll talk about how it fits into the service request module and and things like like that. Sometimes we get calls from from farmers, and they are very specific. I'm on the Casabon A drain, and then we know it's drain. A lot of time, people use the word drain, and they actually just mean a ditch in front of their property. And so those are not municipal drains, these are drains which are big ditches that run through farmers' fields. Sometimes they're actually in pipes in farmers' fields, they run through farmers' fields. So we have a lot of them up here. Like I said, you guys will become experts on them. One of the cool things that we do use is aerial imaging. And it usually works faster than this, too. It's coming. But we do have the ability to to flip back over several years of aerial imaging. And again, I'm going to turn the water off, that's really ugly. We do have the ability to flip back over several years of of imaging. And and that is handy for for a few of our departments when we're looking at, how long has the problem existed? Or when someone says, no, it's always been there, we go, hmm, maybe not so much. But we've got the ability to to flip back through the the aerial imaging. I'm going to turn it off because it makes it really slow to to scroll back and forth on on things when we've got it there. So like I was saying before, we've also started to build, and it is a work in progress, we've started to build some of these services, so, you know, we can turn on the water services, I should scroll into that. And we can see curb stops and fire hydrants and and things like that. And again, that that helps us out with our own asset management planning. But it does actually help when people are calling in about problems, too, because if someone's calling about their curb stop, we can actually tag that that spot. If we've got a broken curb stop, or things like like that, that are are going on with our our services. Transportation, the only one I'm going to point out, obviously, we can see, you can see some different colors on the roads here. And because a lot of our departments use this, this is also reflects our five-year no cut. And so we actually have a five-year no cut policy that says that if we've done, if we've done work on a road, we don't want to give you permission to cut into that road for five years. And so it's color coded and flagged, so that if someone calls in for a, when people are buying property, they, if they requested a planning and or a zoning clearance, that also clears whether there's any building or anything outstanding, we'll also give them this to tell them whether they're in the five-year cut or not in the five-year cut, so that they know when they are purchasing property what to what to expect. But this is what we use for the our service requests. And I'm just going to walk you through a little bit of the the policy as I'm I'm talking here. And I'm going to focus mostly on service requests, and hopefully we've got enough time just to talk about the complaints and the claim form again, because the bulk of stuff we do is service requests that come in. So as communications folks have already talked about, there's a lot of ways that you can report something. So there is the web form that that's on there. The web form, as I said, goes directly to our our the front here. They enter it into CGIS. When things get entered into CGIS, it does generate an automatic email out to the department that is responsible for things. You can email it in, an email to support@westnepersing.ca. They can call 2250 during our regular hours, they can stop in the the office. And sort of pre-COVID, we used to get that, not so much since COVID, people have changed their their habits. And after hours to 1170 for municipal emergencies. And so folks will call, they call 1170 sort of after after hours. They're actually going to get a fire dispatch that will pick it up. They'll send the call out to, or the message out to our foreman or manager, whoever's on call at that time, who then makes the call on whether this is something that they're going to deploy resources for or not. When we're talking after our emergencies, we're talking like things like broken water mains that need immediate attention and things like that. You know, we will go out, our our foreman will sometimes go out and patrol. If we've got reports of a lot of ice in our rural areas, they'll go out and and do a patrol and see whether we're deploying or not deploying and and what happens from that. Most, most bylaw complaints aren't going to be an emergency, and they will be directed, if you've got a noise complaint at 11 o'clock, they're not going to be directed to call, if they call 1170, they're going to be directed to call the police. The police do respond on a keep the peace kind of method, and then they they report back to us in the mornings so that we can follow up with just anything that comes out of it after that. So doesn't matter which way you you send things in. You know, if you call in, we're going to say thank you very much, we've got your complaint. If you walk in, we're going to say thank you very much, we've got your complaint. If you send it in through some electronic means, you will get an automated response. Now, I I know that our automated response from our email is broken right now, and our IT fellow is on vacation, so he sent me some instructions, but it might wait till he's back before we fix the the auto reply on our email. But they will get an auto reply, just says, thanks very much, if this is an emergency, call 911. If these various things have happened, they get it in English and French, and they just sort of get the acknowledgement that yes, their complaint has been received, or their service request has been received. The policy says within two days, someone on our support team is going to enter it into CGIS and and document it. Most times that happens immediately. There are only a few things that kind of delay sometimes, that that take a little bit longer, and it some of it has been a little bit of sort of training with our 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 staff. We use CGIS as a service request system. It's not a message system to get to the managers. So sometimes somebody might be calling in, and they actually are just looking for information. So the the clerk at the front might not be sure yet if this is actually a service request, or if this is, I just need to give information back to this person. And so they might come and talk to myself, or Ms. Gulard, or the manager, and then we'll get it get it logged in. Sometimes there's a little bit of confusion about where we're going to enter things, or if it's actually our issue or not our issue. So sometimes there is a little bit of delay. Most things get entered in right away, so it gets dispatched out to the correct department right away. If we have an emergency kind of during during daytime hours, we still log it in CGIS, but we also make a call to the the subforeman, whoever is sort of responsible. And we've, they're provided a a list, so if it's a distribution and collection, we go to the distribution and collection subforeman, and it kind of rolls down like that, so that we're not relying on the fact, you know, if we've got a, you know, a sewer main break at Front and King on the Friday before a long weekend, we're not relying on waiting for the that foreman to see the the email come through, we're actually going to call them and say, hey, guys, we've got a problem, and that the the CGIS will follow, and that they'll know that it follows. But we at least make sure that the emergencies get out to the people verbally, so that they know that it's it's coming on. And so I'm going to go to one hour properties here. Folks can search by all kinds of things, we can search by address, we can search by name, we can search by whatever. Again, we want to tag the problem to the address where the problem is, not the person that that's calling in. You know, our our bus line is really great at reporting conditions of of roads and things like that, but we don't tag it to the bus line, we tag it to where they're telling us the problem is, so that it gets deployed to the correct foreman, and that the foreman is responding to the right the right place. You know, we've got the ability to look and and see a variety of things about property while we're while we're on there, and so that we know that we're on the right property, we know where where things are going on. There's other data we get underneath there. And in this case, we can just say, you know, we want to look at, while we're talking to someone, we're going to look at all the service requests that are in progress on that property. I put a test one in, oh, it didn't shop. It it came up. So this is so that if we've got someone who's calling in, and they're calling in about an issue, it gives our our staff at the front the ability to go in and take a look. Have we already got a complaint about this property? Do we know what's going on there? Is there, are there notes already on there? Because our subforeman or our manager put notes back into the system for us, so that we can see that, so that again, our frontline people can relay that information right away, going, yep, we got that, we know that, and it's going to happen in this, or this is what is going on with this this service request. So we can give that feedback right away to to residents. It also means that we don't have, you know, 16 service requests going out to the the foreman on the same issue. So if there's a, you know, one of the Stewart Road really needs grading, and we've tagged it on Stewart Road that it really needs grading, then we know that all other calls come through, and we can say, yep, the grade is going to be out there on Thursday because the foreman's already put that information in for us. So all the subsequent calls, we can provide the information back on. The one that we do have sometimes difficulty with folks is that we have calls about follow-up on bylaw. Because bylaw calls often, or not often, bylaw calls have the potential to turn into court cases. So generally, if someone is calling and they wanting an update on a bylaw file, or they want us to to say again, alls we're going to say, and this is the same, the same as, you know, if if you're talking to the mayor and the mayor's talking to us, alls we're going to say is, yes, there is an active file. And that's really all that we're going to release while the file is still active. You know, because I'll often know there'll be notes, there'll be notes internally, so that, so that I can use it, so that I can be talking to the bylaw office, I can be talking to our CIO, I can be talking about that. We're not able to release a lot of that information back out to the public, including to the person that made the complaint in the first place. So sometimes they'll call in for updates, or someone, we've got multiple calls about the same issue, and alls they're going to get is, yes, there's an active file. And that's simply to protect the process, in case the process lands us up in in court at some point in time. So yeah, so when some service requests go in, the project gets gets managed, our our foreman, managers, clerical staff, they put all these responses back in, they closed, and they scheduled their work based on it. The the foreman kind of lived by by this as far as scheduling their their work for the, you know, for the for the week, for next month, for next year, for for their capital. It's a lot of where the the scheduling comes from, and so that they're always using, and then providing the feedback, closing service requests, and and rolling on with things. One of the other features that we use, and it's it's just sort of a link to have it all in the same place, is all these little dots actually link out to Google Street View. And so again, we can go out to Google Street View, the same as if you're actually in Google, you can actually choose which year you want to see it by. So again, it gives us that information about what what's actually been going on. We do use it a little bit as well for things like, if people are calling in with streetlights out, we ask them to give us the pole number. But we can also go to Street View, and they say it's the, you know, the streetlight in front of 225 Holdage, and it's pole number 123, we can go down to Street View, we can actually find the pole they're talking about, and we know that we're on the right property, and we we can mark things. Again, when we're out in some of the rural areas, you know, it's really handy in town, so I can say it's right in front of 225 Holdage. When we're out in some of the rural areas, they want to talk about the cross culvert, and the cross culvert's the one that goes under the road, as opposed to under your ditch or under your laneway. And they want to say it's the cross culvert out on, I'm going to use Stewart Road again. It's the cross culvert out on Stewart Road. We can turn on aerial, we obviously can't get Google Road View in a lot of parts of our municipality. We can try out River Valley, it doesn't give us much. But we can turn on the the aerial, and we can see what where the culverts go, because we can see the waterways on it. And again, it helps us track down and tag where the problem is, so that when our foreman are deploying, they're heading out to the the correct location and things like that. This is just sort of, you know, internal information. We actually have a system for how we record things. If it's, you know, an intersection, or if it's the middle of the road, we've got a system that our our staff uses, so that we're always putting it on southeast corner, you know, south side of the road, middle of the road, things like that, for stuff that's not tagged to a specific address that mostly happens out in our our rural areas. In town, we usually have a a street address to attack things, attach things to. We talked about municipal drains really briefly. We have a CaseMark, does is our drain superintendent right now. But unless the farmer calls in and says, and actually, I'm not saying farmer, it doesn't have to be farmer, but unless the resident calls in and says, I'm on the Casabon drain, if they just say, there's a problem with the drain, or there's a problem with the ditch, we actually deploy public works first. And that's because people do have this mix-up of terminology. And so those that are on a municipal drain, they know they're on a municipal drain, and they'll give us the drain name, and then we know that they're talking municipal drain. Otherwise, they just say that the the drain is blacked up, they frequently just mean our road ditches. And so we always will deploy public works first, public works takes a look. If it needs to go to our drain, then they just put the the service request over to our our drain superintendent and follow along. Like I said, we 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 close things off, there's all kinds of of cool reports that that the departments can generate, that we can generate as far as number of service requests, we're rolling service requests, what things. We also use it, this department uses it as a bit of a reminder, there are some things that are done annually. And so they actually will plug it in here annually, the service request will stay open, and that just means every March, this hits the the foreman, when they pull up their 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 list in the morning, this hits their thing, and they know that they're going to go do this work, and it just sits there every year. So it's that that recurrent thing that that happens with service requests. I'm just going to touch briefly then on notice of claims and the complaint procedure from the the policy that that we gave. And the reason we gave you sort of this new draft policy is our our last policy, there is an existing policy, but it's about, you know, two thirds of a page long, and doesn't actually encompass a lot of what we do. And so this this is a, you know, a better encompassment of of what we actually do. And if we again want to talk about what our communications folks do, things, and then help us draft policies. So I'm going to jump to notice of claim at the end, if you've got it there. So a notice of claim is typically used when the when there's been damages done. We actually have a notice of claim form. If folks aren't sure what to do, we, they actually frequently end up on Mr. Priest's desk. She'll send them the 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 form, we get the notice of claim forms back from folks. Some people, obviously, they, you know, if they go straight to their lawyer or the insurance, we get notice of claims directly as far as a claim filed through a lawyer, and we send those things off to our insurer. If it's someone with with, you know, less, a less significant damage, then they come through the notice of of claim form. And that is frequently vehicle damage and things like that, or the complaints that come through notice of complaints, notice of claims procedure, they're received by the the clerk's department, and then followed up with the appropriate department for for how things work with with claims. Complaints. And again, we don't, we don't get a lot of complaints, but we did outline the 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 procedure here. So complaint is kind of those things in between, right? So if it's not a service request or a question, it's, I've got a specific concern about this employee, or what happened at this event, or those kind of things. So it's not just that I've got a question, but that I actually wanted to make a a complaint. Again, there's a a form attached. You know, the form asks for some some specific details, and it asks for the complainant's contact information. I should mention that in our regular service requests as well, you'll have noticed on the service request form, it asks for someone's name and contact information. If you're calling in and reporting an issue, we're going to ask you the same stuff. And the reason we ask the the name and contact information is it actually helps our folks later on. So even if it's, you know, a problem with the ditch, that it allows, if we need to, it allows our operations folks to be able to call the person and say, can I get more information? Or we're coming out on this date, or, you know, it allows them to have that that kind of contact. One that does get, you know, that people get quite concerned about is making bylaw and property standards complaints. But we still do need your contact information, because again, and and you're going to get approached by people that want you to make the complaint for them, because they don't want anyone to know their their name. It's really difficult, again, when I talk bylaw stuff, because bylaw stuff has the opportunity to end up in court. And therefore, we really, really, really need to know that original complainant. And the bylaw officer will talk to that original complainant to get the details, to get the follow-up and things like that. The bylaw officer doesn't ever go to the neighbor and say, hey, so-and-so next door just called me. You know, and I know that's what people are afraid of, but that's not what happens. Now, when we get to those situations, oftentimes, but again, we have sort of neighbor-to-neighbor disputes that have been going on, bylaw ends up getting involved, the other neighbor is just going to guess. But our bylaw officer is not going to say, you know, yeah, it was, you know, Aunt Tess said that they called us about that. They're not going to give out that information that is. They're not going to give out that information that is internal for us so that we can contact people and it's in case things get to court, we've got that original complaint. So it's the same with, with complaints procedures. We are going to ask for the, the contact information and not just an anonymous complaint. That we're, you know, so we've got actual facts to act on. Complaints are going to go to our CIO. And, you know, the, the reason they're going to go to our, our CIO is because by the time they get to that stage, it probably needs somebody more than our managers to address them. Because the, you know, either it's about an employee, so we want some confidentiality in it. We don't want it handling in 16 different things. Or there's an issue that has gone that far, it's gone through the managers, it's gone through the department and it's now on the CIO's desk. And then he will either assign it appropriately or do the investigation as far as getting the, the complaints resolved, which is why it's, it's headed to, to Mr. Barbo. And again, you know, they'll, they'll get some acknowledgement that, yep, we've got your complaint and, and yep, it's going on. Again, depending on the nature of the, the complaint, the feedback might be, yes, there is an active file. The feedback might be, thanks very much. The feedback at the end of it might be, it's been resolved to our satisfaction. Particularly if it involves HR stuff. So if it involves an employee, if it involves HR, we'll deal with it internally, but it's not necessarily that we're going to be able to provide the complainant with all the details of how that was resolved. And again, that's, that's a protection of, of, you know, our, our HR statutes as well as the, the investigation and things like that. So I know sometimes it might be difficult, but I, I do sort of recommend in, in all cases, if you're getting those complaints, even if you're getting service requests, that you direct them through the appropriate channel so that you don't end up being the back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And, and again, things are, are, are dealt with, with confidentially in the, with the CIO. So it's, it's not that CIO is going to go out to the employee and say, hey, so-and-so told us this. You know, that's not how we run HR investigations and things like that. But it might just be, so if people are somewhere in between, they're not making a formal complaint yet, but they're not satisfied with how a service request has been handled. You know, a service request has been closed, someone's called in for an update and our, our support staff says, oh, yep, nope, they've, they've closed it. Our support staff is also trained to get that next bit of information because sometimes things recur. And so again, property standards is, is one. We can get a property cleaned up, it can come back. And so we'll, we'll, they'll train to kind of get the information. Is it a recurrence? Which case, we're going to start something fresh. Things like potholes are fairly easy. The pothole is either filled or not filled, you know? Things like water in the ditches, it's sometimes not as, as easy. So sometimes it'll, they'll, you know, we'll be able to give them the response from the notes that are in here and they might say, I'm not happy with that response. I still think there's a problem. And our, our first line is our support team or then, you know, have gone and will do that. Hang on, let me get some more information and I'll get back to you. And they'll go check with the, the Public Works folks, the forman to see if there's any additional information that we can provide that wasn't in there to see if we can sort of satisfy things at that front level. If they're not satisfied that, that they think that the department has not treated them appropriately or they've got concerns like that, that's when the complaint system is, is for us to sort of deal with those, those complaints coming through. And then as it says, you know, municipal freedom of information and protection of privacy applies to all the stuff we do. And stuff, some stuff is available through AMPIPA. If someone puts in a, a request, a lot of stuff is not available through AMPIPA. Active investigations are always excluded from AMPIPA. HR stuff is, is, will be excluded as well, but there is sort of that, that, that possibility that there. So that kind of wraps up, I think, I think I got all my notes here. How our service request stuff, stuff flows and then the things that we can do and some of the, the tools that we have on our hands. Like I said, both internally and externally, the CGIS is a, is a work in progress as we get good information, we add additional information. We have, I'll see if I can scroll out here. So we actually have things and things that, that, you know, that came up with, with prior councils and, and it might be an issue this council wants to take a look at as well. And we do have the, the requests sometimes from the outside world is, you know, municipally-owned land. And so we don't keep a forward-facing inventory of municipally-owned land. Because generally what happens with the municipality here is that if somebody has a, a, you know, wishes to purchase land or whatever, they actually say, hey, what's the deal with this property? And they bring an offer to council. We have not typically had kind of surplus land listed. And so obviously, all the stuff that lights up yellow is not all surplus because this is our building right here. And much as we'd like to sell it to you, not this year. But it, it's got some other tools that we can use as, as, as we get rolling through our, our, our term plan and you guys start talking about things that you want to see. We start talking about where our plans are. The software's got a lot of potential for us to put some really cool things in and, and to, to get information for you. So I'll hand it back to Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you again to all three of you for a great presentation. I will open the floor up for questions from our members. Councilor Padareh.
Yes, Masim, Madam Ashok. I got a few questions. So this part of the system is not available to the public? It's just for staff, that's it?
Correct.
Okay. You talk about the municipal drain. Are the, the pipes in the field registered on that too or just, just the main drain?
No, so the closed drains are registered as, as well. So not, 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 not the,
Not the tiles.
Not the tiles, not the tiles.
Okay.
No.
Okay, yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be.
I understand we used to have maps that are available in the Verne office so that it's one of those things that we can look at aggregating that, that data.
Are they eventually going to be transferred to that, you think?
We, we can look at it. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, what, what that will look like, but I'll certainly, yeah, we'll certainly take a look at that.
That would be a great, that's a big concern for the.
Well, the tile drains are typically a private drain though that is usually requested and provided to a specific landowner or farmer, right? A municipal drain has more of a public component where it will cross sections of land. It will handle the area requiring drainage. So that's why we have the, the, the municipal drains or the agricultural drains for it. That's why it's listed here. And the tile drains, even though there was a funding that was available for it, 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 it really belongs to, I'm going to say a name. The Boldi Farm has, is tile drained or the Bausch Farm is tile drained. That's really their property at that point, right?
Yeah, but I heard like somebody would buy your property and they can't find the, the plans. That's, that's the biggest concern I heard. That's why it would be great to.
Yeah, and I know that we used to have the maps in, in Verne. I don't know if we have all the current maps, but then like I said, it would be an internal thing that we, we might be able to have.
Well, okay, but we'd be able to provide that information should somebody require it in a, a different and less public manner. Yeah.
Last thing, that system, what's the cost of it? Is it initial cost then so much a year or?
So it, it's, it's an annual, annual fee. And so you're testing me now. Should know this. Our, our CBO, so our, our building permit portion is a separate fee from just the CGIS. Oh crap. Oh, my language tonight, I apologize, guys. Yeah, I apologize. Off the top of my head, I, I, I can't think off the top of my head what our, our total cost on the, the software is. Let me get back to you on that.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Councilor Padareh.
Madam Mayor. When you close the service requests, do we get a notification if we've opened the service request? And do we get an incident number also when we get a reply from the system?
So you won't get an, an incident number when you send in the, if you send it in through electronically because we, we then take that information and have to transfer it into the, the system. If you're calling for us, we, we, you know, we could provide. Generally speaking, we don't provide follow-up if the thing has been closed and it's been closed within sort of a, a seven-day window. And for things like that, it's, it's things like potholes and things like that because they're, they're really obvious, the pothole is now patched. If, if the service request is still open after seven days, then the system is that, you know, you're going to get a follow-up call from clerical staff saying, yes, you're still open. Maybe we've got an update as far as, you know, it's scheduled for July. Maybe we've got an update like that. For bylaw calls, they, they hand, they run a little bit differently. If you call in, you're probably going to get the line about, you know, the file is still open. The bylaw officer will frequently call back to the original complainant to just let them know if things have been resolved. They might not give them all the details, but generally they will let them know that things have been, been resolved because those things might not be as obvious as filling a, a, a pothole and, and things like that. So, but of course, if, you know, let's say we don't typically do a callback on service requests that are closed, but if people call in to say, hey, what happened with? We can pull them up on the system, give them the notes on what happened and, and, you know, let them know what the outcome was as well.
To, 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 to answer you just historically as well, when we first had our, our original service request system, we attempted to get back to everybody, but that became very time-consuming for the return that we had on it and the necessity that we had on it. And so it was more of a cost benefit thing where we can have our, our people downstairs just fully on the phone all of the time. And so it's probably a couple extra each or FTEs. And so we haven't necessarily seen the need for it. I see what you're saying from a policing perspective. They can give you an incident number. But we don't, we don't have that built in our system. Like we, we don't assign a number to it, do we?
There is a service request number.
There is.
But you won't get that automatically when you, when you, when you submit a form.
Because it hasn't been entered.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because it would be nice just because at least you know what's been dealt with. Like I used it for a burnt light, the streetlight. So and then after, whenever, when they did it, then I said, oh, okay, they fixed the light because it was lit up, so.
Yeah.
Just if I would have had a request, the service request saying, your request has been closed because it's been dealt with, just that even as a reply, at least I would have known. At least I know that it's been dealt with. So in this way, you won't really know in that regard. So that was my first question. Am I allowed another question?
Of course.
How many service requests do you get per month or per year?
So like I said, we had, you know, logging the system, you know, 1,800 and, and change last year. But that doesn't include the calls that we're actually able to just provide information right off the bat. So we'll, we'll get a call about, you know, the plows haven't been on my, my road yet. It might not get logged because we know that the plow is deployed at four o'clock and we're just going to tell them, yes, they're deployed, hang tight, they're coming. You know, we're going and, and it, and it won't get, get necessarily logged as a service request because it's already been dealt with. The same happens even over the summer sometimes where we, we track things like, you know, calcium application and, and stuff like that where we just know, they want to know when the calcium has been applied. We give them the schedule for, for things. But yeah, so we, we had sort of 1,800 last year, you know, primarily in the Tardisols area. Yeah.
Yeah. So how many calls in a year? Thank you.
Councilor St. Louis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to piggyback on Councilor Gondi's question. So if a member of the public reaches out for a service request, what's your recommendation to them if it's not getting done after more than a week and two weeks? Do you recommend that they resubmit, excuse me, online? Or would you rather them come or call?
So, so not resubmit. So, and, and again, we've had some staff changes, but hopefully where if they hasn't been closed, they will have got an update which says, yes, we're aware of things, we're still working on it or this is the timeline for, for things. So they, they don't feel that need to, to necessarily, you know, resubmit or, or get that. Now, sometimes people, we use kind of the seven-day window. Sometimes people want a response in, in three days. And I suggest that they just, if they've emailed initially, that they just kind of hit the email again to say, looking for an update or they can call, looking for an update. We might have information already in the system for them that we can release back to them at, at that time, even though we're not at our seven days. If our forman have had a chance to be out there and take a look at the problem. But we're certainly be able to at least talk to them and say, hang, hang on, I'm going to find out what I can for you and I'll, I'll get back to you. So, yeah, we prefer them not resubmit online, but yeah, reach out by the email or by the phone than looking for the update.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Tacey?
Yes, Madam Mayor, to you. The after-hours emergency when they reach the fire hall and you mentioned the plows that they'll say they're dispatched, they'll be dispatched at 4:00 AM. And if they feel, the resident feels that it's not soon enough, what's that process? Because you said they either contact the, the forman or the person in charge.
Yeah, so if the call comes into 11:70, our, our fire dispatch take the, the call and they send it right out to the, the forman and there's a schedule for who's, who's responding for that. And the forman makes a decision on whether this is an incident that we're going to deploy on or that we're not going to deploy on. And our forman are going to deploy based on minimum, for, for snow, are going to base, deploy based on minimum maintenance standards, deploy based on hours of, of driving that are available, deploy based on, on safety and things like that. And so, yep, we're not always going to be able to please 100% of the people 100% of the, the time. So that if they, they're calling at, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon or, or 4:00 in the afternoon on a, on a Saturday, our forman might be getting it, but our plows are going out the next morning and they might not be able to get out any sooner because of our plows are out driving on the Saturday morning already, we're out of hours. And we have minimum maintenance standards that says we only need to clear within X amount of time and, and things like that. And there are exemptions for heavy storms. So it might be that they're going to come out the, the next morning. One of the things that's on our website, there is actually a really good section. It's in the FAQ under the roads and sidewalks and it talks about how we deploy. It talks about what order roads are done and it talks about how we do snow removal. And it's a really good breakdown. But I'd say if, if they, if they didn't get the response that they, they want to, our folks aren't going to leave an emergency hanging. They are going to have responded to public safety, they're going to have responded to emergency.